Good afternoon and welcome everyone to today's meeting of the Lincolnshire Joint Local Access Forum. Just to make you aware that we are live streaming the meeting today. Before we begin, for those of us in the council chamber, there is no fire drill planned this afternoon. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, through reception and assembling the car park at the front of the building. For those present via Microsoft Teams, could I ask that you use the hand raising function on Teams if you wish to speak and our collateral list of requests to speak. We now move to item one on the agenda, election of chairman for 2023/24. Do we have any nominations?
Chairman, may I nominate Chris Padley?
Thank you. Is there a second for the nomination of Chris Padley?
I'll second that, please, thank you.
Thank you, seconded by councillor Cairns. Are there any further nominations? Okay, there's no further nominations, so I'll now move to a vote. Yes.
I'm, for the sake of continuing the proceedings, I will accept a nomination because nobody else has put themselves forward. But I don't have any intention of serving for the whole year. If I do, it will be more a case of just getting this meeting over and seeing what happens then because I don't think it's a satisfactory situation at all we're in. Thank you.
Okay, noted, thank you. Could we now take a vote on that nomination, please? All those in favour, and can I please ask those on Teams to turn their cameras on and indicate with their hands, please, if they wish to speak? Thank you. Any against? And any abstentions? Thank you very much. That is carried and I'll now hand it to Chris.
Right, I move on to item two, which is the election of a vice chairman. Yes, do we have any nominations? No, we don't have any. Can I ask your advice on what we do? I think we've had this happen before.
Yeah, if there's no nominations today, we can roll that forward to the next meeting and we'll look to elect a vice chairman then.
The next item is public questions. I'm just going to say here, is this in the correct place? Shouldn't it have happened before we started the meeting, but perhaps?
I believe because we needed to let the chairman and vice chairman, there's somebody to lead the meeting before we have the questions.
Yeah, I'm not raising that as any kind of objection, but just in case people are, there are people who might be surprised it's not come earlier. Are there any members of the public here? Presumably that means there aren't any public questions either. Oh, we have somebody online. Do they want to ask a question? I'll do any of them if there's more than one.
We have Peter Hinton wishing to speak.
Peter, can you speak, please? Ah, thank you.
Sorry, Peter, your mic's just muted. If you want, just unmute.
Yeah, sorry. What I was going to say was, I think there's a slight misunderstanding here that if we were following normal council procedure, we would of course have addresses, issues raised by members of the public in person. However, I have had questions by members of the public put to me that I will probably raise later in the meeting. So I think it's actually in the right place, Chairman. Unless the open forum is going to admit members of the public, and in the years I've been on the local access forum, I can't ever recall that happening.
Just to clarify, we are open to the public here in the council chamber, so any members of the public can come to the chamber and ask a question.
Well, thank you for the clarification. In that case, I think we can move on to apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor, sorry, from Sandra Harrison, from Sharon Hayes, from John Law, John Thorns and Nick Tomlin.
And item five is declarations of interests, and I'll make the usual reminder that people can, or members can declare an interest at any stage of the meetings if any should arise. So does anybody wish to declare any at the moment? And the answer's no, I think. So we'll move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. And the first thing is to approve the minutes. So first of all, are there any points people wish to make, any corrections to them? Yes, Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a minor one. Item 50, footpath obstruction priority list, it should read the report questioned whether cropping could be given a higher priority, not copping.
That was 50.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, you can make that minor amendment. And I think we call that a textual amendment, don't we? And can I have a motion to approve the previous minutes, please? Can I do it from the chair? I will do. Yes, I'll move it from the chair. Oh, that's seconded. All those in favour? Any against? Passed, non-comb or unanimously one or the other? Any matters arising from the minutes, please? It would appear not. So I can move on. Yep, Chris?
Sorry, Chairman, I'm unaware of whether or not, under paragraph 52 regarding permissive access, whether a letter had been sent to the relevant DEFRA ministry, if that had been drafted by anybody. But I haven't seen any copy, so I don't know if it's an action that requires taking forward.
I'll follow that up.
Right, yes, I mean presumably John would have done it if it was going to be done. Anything else arising? If there's not, we can move on to item seven, which is, I take it you're going to give this one, Chris, the update on the Deregulations Act. 2015?
Indeed, exactly the point I was going to make, straight from the outset, Chairman. Yes, thank you for that. So as long-time members of the local access forum will recognise, the Deregulation Act, which has a package of rights-of-way reforms, was passed into law in 2015. However, we've been waiting for a raft of regulations, secondary legislation to go alongside that to enable those elements to be brought into actual usage. Just for brevity, I'll only focus on a couple of the highlights, just to remind everybody. But the main one, which has seen a lot of press overcoming over the last few months, has been the closure of the definitive map to applications for historic footpaths dating before 1949. Members may recall that the government had determined to repeal that piece of legislation. However, they have now U-turned on their U-turn and are now looking at a date of 2031. So they're looking to invoke the Secretary of State's ability to extend that from 2026 to 2031. So as a consequence, we're aware that the ongoing claiming of what are colloquially known as lost ways will be continuing across the country, and I'll come back to how that sits for Lincolnshire in a moment because we've seen quite a development over the last 12 months in that area. The other areas that are going to be prevalent within the deregulation work is the right to apply for public path orders and the associated guidance, which are known as the presumptions regulations, which will be based around privacy, security for residences and businesses, where there will be a greater presumption that proposals will succeed, where those challenges are trying to be met through a public path diversion order. They're the two main ones. There's a few other bits and pieces that go around that. The update we've had from DEFRA to the DEPT meeting, that's the old County Surveyors Society, for those that recall that, at the last meeting back in April, was that they're looking to publish a timeframe for the bringing forward of those regulations in the near future. I believe it was to be the end of May, and I've yet to see any, and we're in June, so it's just another deadline that appears to have been missed. We would expect from the soundings that DEFRA officials have given to the profession that these regulations will be being looked at, published before Parliament in the autumn. It usually, it happens in either April or October generally, and we're expecting them to go now forward into the October one. Part of the sticking point has been around the cost recovery regulations because authorities will be allowed to charge in a slightly different way the services we provide for public path diversion and extinguishment orders and the like. Just coming back to the piece on historic lost ways. Again, long-term members of the local access forum will possibly be aware of this, but this is where they're looking at closure of the definitive map now by 2031, and looking at whether or not there are ongoing programmes of claiming or applying for routes which do not appear on the definitive map but have a basis in evidence that dates back to prior to 1949. Just to give you some context for Lincolnshire, and we're not unique in this, but we are one of a small number that have been sort of looked at. We've had a particularly driven set of individuals looking at this, which is good. We now have 404 registered definitive map modification order cases on our register, of which 390 are applications from the public, the remaining 14 are ones that we had self-initiated probably some time ago but had never completed. Just to give you an idea of how much of a surge that has been, since April 2021, we've received 259 applications, of which 186 of those have come in the last calendar year between the 1st of April and 2022 to 2023. So that's 186 in one year, pretty much. And it tends to be driven from one individual. We've had 225 applications from one individual, which is a phenomenal number. However, that does cause us something of a resource pressure. At the current nationally-understood rate of conclusion to these matters, which takes around, it's estimated to be about four years per case if you look nationally about that.
Can I just interrupt you there, Chris? The one individual you refer to is, I think, somebody I know. I don't know him well, but I know who he is and I'm familiar with his work. And he is in fact working under the Aegis, I think would be the right term, of the Rambler's Association. And when the deadline began to loom close, the various rights-of-way, national rights-of-way organisations began to organise themselves and raise funding and appoint officers and so on in order to get the job done, so to speak, before the cutoff. So I think it's very misleading to say one individual, which carries with it the connotation that there's maybe somebody who's a bit of a fanatic. He may be a bit of a fanatic, but he is being employed, not necessarily for payment, but he is doing work which comes under a wider scheme from the national rights-of-way bodies.
Yes, my apologies, Chairman. It wasn't my intention to imply that there was anything behind that. In actual fact, most of his applications have been made in his own right and not on behalf of the Rambler's, although there are a number on behalf of the Rambler's as an organisation. But that aside, this is a perfectly legitimate process, and there are many people around the country doing similar schemes, including the British Horse Society. So it's not something that we're unaware of. Just coming back to the resource pressure, an average of four years per case to get through all the various processes with the resource levels we have, we're looking at a 34-year caseload at present, and that's at the present rate. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us. One of the benefits we will have is that probably a good time before 2031, we'll have an understanding of the totality because the number of documents to be resourced is finite.
Could you tell me what you mean by 30-year?
We have three dedicated officers looking at this work if they average four cases per year, which is considered to be about the national norm. That's 12 cases per year, 404 cases divided by 12 is 33.6666.
Okay.
So as I say, there's plenty of work at it. Now, whether or not some of those cases that we've received will pass what will be known as the preliminary assessment, which will be a new part of the regulations and therefore would be dealt with by the not-making of an order. We don't know because we're not in a position to actually assess the applications as they come in because we already have full caseloads and we're not able to pick up what falls into the hopper over the last, you know, two years, really. So that's just to give some context as to where we're at in terms of that historic lost ways programme, which has been ongoing since 2000, so this is no surprise to local authorities that this was going to occur. And that will be my report on the Deregulation Act. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And just make one comment online is that we've, I think, all got used in the last few years to the government in all sorts of ways, doing what is commonly called kicking the can down the road. That's partly because of the difficulties that COVID caused. But I can't help thinking that all the deadlines and suggested timescales we just heard will not actually happen. Going back to the, oh, sorry, does anybody want to ask, Chris, any questions about that? Online or in the room? Nope? Yep. The next one is the... Peter Hinton, please.
Yeah, Chris, as you know, I've taken a bit of an interest in this because I've been getting my ear bent locally about issues with DMMOs. Is it possible that we could have a public statement drafted that we could share with members of the public who have concerns about some historic path going through their front door, et cetera? It's all well and good me trying to explain it verbally, but something definitive from the LAF that we can hand out to the public and say, this is the current situation, would be very helpful.
Thank you, Peter. In practice, part of the application procedure is that the applicant has to serve notice upon the landowners that they're aware of, or ask the authority for dispensation to post notices on that land. On the whole, that has generated dialogue between those landowners and the local authority, and we have a PAC that we can send out to affected landowners to explain to them procedure, what it means to them, so that there isn't a knee-jerk reaction of, well, I want to make an objection, which is what we tend to get. We have to talk them through the process about when that will be an appropriate position to take and their understanding of the legislation under which we're working under. So it's something we already have, but I'm happy to take anything extra from the local access forum in that regard. Just as a slightly separate take on that, I'm also engaged with the National Farmers' Union, and I've done a presentation at Woodall Spa for their East Coast Spilsby, working in land. Branch members, I think there was over 100 landowners came to Woodall Spa, and myself and someone from the NFU basically took them through the process so that they were aware of what was happening, because this was such a surge. It hadn't been like a trickle over the years since 2020, when the closure of the rights-of-way mapping was first mooted. Because it's come in a surge, there was suddenly a lot of angst, particularly amongst the landowning community. And so we spent some time trying to work with them, explain the situation, explain the legislation on how the process will take shape. Just for information, I shall also be at the Lincolnshire Show with the NFU, and they've invited more people who are attending the show, so we can provide that same information again. And similarly for the South Lincolnshire branches around South Holland and South Cisteven. We're looking after harvest, because obviously after the next couple of months, though farming will be quite busy, we'll be looking at running a similar event in the south of the county. So hopefully we're getting amongst a lot of the landowning interests in terms of the larger agricultural holdings. Obviously, that doesn't capture individual householders and smaller farms, small holdings and so on. So that's when we tend to get the engagement at an individual level once landownership notices have been served by the applicant. I hope that helps, Peter, but obviously I can add more into that if it's felt necessary.
Does anybody else want to comment on that? Peter, did you want to come back?
Yeah, I think the bit of a black hole is partly parish councils and district ward councillors make them aware that this information is available. That would be very helpful.
Anybody else want to say anything? Because I will say a little. First of all, I entirely understand the problem that Peter's brought here. And I agree personally, I'm speaking personally here, that more, or a better communication could take place in informing people affected that just because there's an historic right-of-way on a location, it doesn't mean that anybody is trying to reinstate it on that route. And generally speaking, in my experience, there's, I can't think of any cases where anybody's putting in an application where a route has been completely developed, say, and it's not practical to reinstate it. But quite often, an application is put in where most of a route is still there, still readily reinstatable, except for some part of it where there's one house being built over it at the end of the road or something. And in those circumstances, a diversion to be made is eminently feasible without affecting really anybody adversely, at least no more than reinstating the path in itself is. And to inform people that that is what is going to happen more clearly. I know people often don't read the literature they're sent, they get a pile of documents. It's not going to be the one that's standing out who's saying, sort of, don't worry. But I think more could be done.
Indeed, that's the line we take when we get to talk to people individually. Of course, we also reflect on some of the other changes within the Deregulation Act, which will allow for what's called definitive map consent orders, whereby the line that is applied for won't necessarily be the line that the order is made for if we get agreement from the landowner for an alternative that roughly translates to the same routing. It might mean that rather than cutting across the corner of a field, it just might go around the slight edge of the field, if that's not too secure to us. Similarly with households, there'll be opportunities to, right at the outset, rather than go through a process that we currently have to do of actually diverting through a different legal process, the claimed route. So that is something that's been part of the deregulation package, and it's something that we do inform individuals when we're aware of it from them. Obviously, we don't know what's being applied for until probably after they do, quite often.
I might take the opportunity to draw to your attention that there are cases where DMMOs have been made and at the inquiry, they were, and confirmed, and the county council has announced its intention to make just such a diversion, and years later, that diversions have not been made.
Thankfully, few and far between now, Chairman.
I don't think there's any more to say about that, unless anyone else has anything. So if we can move on to item eight and the English coast path establishment. Inspector, is that you going?
I'll start, but I think we have Matthew Chaplin also on the Teams call, and Matthew can give us an update for perhaps the North East Lincolnshire stretch. Obviously, we can't look at the North Lincolnshire bit because they're not part of the forum. But as, again, as members may recall from previous discussions, the England coast path from the Marine and Coastal Access Act is being worked upon across the country. And obviously, that includes our coastline. We have one section of open coast path between Skegness Pier and the north end of Mabelthorpe. It's quite a short section and is mainly on the concrete promenades. It does create us something of a problem because as part of our protection of the east coast, we pump a lot of, I say we, the Environment Agency, pump a lot of sand from the seabed on to the beach, the beach re-nourishment programme. But of course, that sand then blows all across the promenade, which then causes us an access issue for the number of users who wish to use the promenade section in mobility or even cycling, because there is a recycle allowance for it as well at that stretch. So it does cause us, even though it's a short stretch, there's actually quite a lot of work that needs doing on that. The remaining stretches between Sutton Bridge to Skegness and from Mabelthorpe to the Humber Bridge are currently in what's known as the establishment phase. We will be shortly advertising for an officer to deliver that, a bespoke officer to deliver against that. The biggest piece of infrastructure we have that is required in the Lincolnshire stretch, aside from Northern, North East Lynx, is a bridge over the River Steeping at Gibraltar Point.
Can I just interrupt there? When you say establishment, do I take it that to mean that the route has been decided? It's simply a matter of putting in the physical path?
That's right, Chairman. Sorry, my apologies. Yes, the Secretary of State has now signed off on the route as selected after a lot of analysis and weighing up the balances between tourism and recreation and business and landownership usage. That's now been signed off. There are no outstanding objections to that. In fact, we only had one objection to the northern stretch and one objection to the southern stretch, both of which were resolved fairly amicably with a little bit of negotiation. So yes, we're now in the establishment phase of signage and infrastructure to be installed across the path. As I say, the major piece is a large bridge over the River Steeping. What we're looking at doing is utilising an existing bridge that is in the ownership of current ownership of the Internal Drainage Board that will just need some modifications to bring it up to public standard, public use standards. So hopefully, we'll start to see some progress in terms of that establishment work. And then once that's completed, we will be opening those sections once complete. And that's due to be for around the end of 2024. That's the scope that Natural England as the overseer body on this work has left us with. So that covers the Lincolnshire stretch. I'll happily take questions now if there are any. But if not, I'll pass over to Matthew, and he can give an update on the North East Lynx bit.
Does anyone want to ask questions now? Perhaps it's better if we ask Matthew next and then ask questions together. So Matthew, are you there?
I am here. Good afternoon, Chair. I'm at the establishment stage as well, looking at putting a footway alongside Mambi Road between Emingham and North Killenhome. It's quite a drawn-out process, trying to get money from DEFRA. And there's another footway that's going to be round the port gate at the Port Road. It links from Long Strip, which goes on to the Humber Sea Wall. And that goes into sort of Emingham. ABP have said that they want to develop land right next to Long Strip Wood, which has sort of put back dated what was intending to do round the port gate. There's other options that we're looking at, depending on what ABP are intending to do. So that's where North East Lincolnshire and North Lynx are at.
Yeah, there, you finished then?
Yep.
Yep, okay, thank you.
We've got Andy Tomlin.
Andy Tomlin, has one, answered a question?
Ah, yes, it's just struck me, how will the coastal pass be affected? It's just struck me, how will the coastal path be affected by the proposed nuclear dump, which is going to be right next to the coast north of Skegness?
Thank you, Angie. Yes, that's a very good question. Similar to any other national strategic infrastructure project, so we also have the Boston Alternative of Energy Facility that is still going through its development consent order process. What will happen is that, you know, similar to the rights of way network, that it will allow for movement. So it's actually a process undertaken by Natural England rather than by ourselves under a system called variation orders. So if there is an effect, you know, if, you know, the geographical, geological disposal facility, as it's properly known, it comes to pass out at Thedlethorpe, and if that has an effect on the line of the England Coast Path, then ultimately, yeah, the coast path can be moved. Similarly, in those areas which are subject to erosion, if the cliff edge goes, that there's an inbuilt system for what's called rollback as well. So these things have been catered for in terms of the legislation to allow for development. You know, we, it's appreciated that the coastline is not a static entity, it will change, whether that be through development or the increase in need for flood protection, or indeed erosion or accretion. So there's always, it's always under review.
Can I just add there that I can't imagine for one moment that they would be putting the entrance, the point at which excavations start, that close to the sea as the coastal path. I would imagine it will be quite a long way inland, and then they'll bore a tunnel out. I think the idea is to build it under the sea, isn't it?
It is, Chairman, yes. I can't quite recall at that exact point where the coast path is, because obviously when you start going to further north, you start getting into areas where there is accepted land because it's mud flat. So the coast path actually moves quite a way inland, so it could be that there is an effect there.
The site is quite close to where the coast and the sand dunes start.
Well, I mean, but anyway, the short and long of it is that it's going to be the same as any other development or structure that affects rights of way. So, well, thank you. Does anyone have any else to ask questions? Nope. Move on to item nine, the North Iceman Relief Road access proposals. Oh, this is access in the sense of access to the countryside and so on.
Yes, access in terms of public rights of way access and recreation access.
For a moment, I was thinking access roads, you know, it's not quite the same thing.
And I'm afraid this piece is actually going to be quite brief because unfortunately I've not been able to download the plans that I was hoping to display. However, I added it to the agenda for potential further discussion and as whether or not the local access forum as a body felt it might be appropriate for the people managing the scheme, which is obviously on behalf of the county council, presented directly to the forum to demonstrate the current thinking. There's been a number of workshops and public engagement evenings. There's another two next week, I believe, on Wednesday and Thursday, which are going to look specifically at public access. I had also put the team developing this in touch with the various user organisations, Cycling UK, British Horse Society, Lincolnshire Field Paths and the Ramblers, just to make sure that, you know, that they had properly engaged. At the moment, the proposals are not crystal, they're not necessarily set in stone, and there will be opportunity to perhaps amend them. We've had some input as a rights of way section, some of that's been listened to, but I do think, and I certainly know from discussions with Wendy Bannerman at the British Horse Society, there are other elements that perhaps could be being considered, and hopefully those will be brought forward before the scheme is published into its form where it then goes into the planning phase, as it were. Thank you, Chairman.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes. councillor Carrington.
Thank you. Firstly, can I welcome, firstly, can I welcome Chris's suggestion? I think it'd be very helpful if this group did have a presentation and the ability to interact directly. The line of the road is just outside my division, but actually has very significant impacts on communities within it. And it's very interesting to look at the latest modelling. We often think when we're talking about access in terms of footpaths, but people also access the countryside as pedestrians, as cyclists using country roads, and the reduction in traffic forecast for, and I'm taking one particular example from the village of Halmston, where you're looking at one road, which is a rat run, and it's small, and it's heavy good vehicles, you're looking at a 50% reduction. Now, that can only have positive impacts in terms of active access to the countryside. But I do think that would be useful because I think there are various points that I'm aware of, and I'm sure that applies to neighbouring divisions as well, where there are potential, there is perhaps potential for amending the route or looking at the routes of some footpaths, including in one instance where the Viking Way currently runs, to rationalise it as part of that. So I think it'd be very, very helpful indeed if we could have that direct contact. Thank you, Chairman.
I have to ask, you have already talked, Chris, about various people you've consulted, rights of way user groups and so on. Are we not being approached rather late in the day in that case?
By consideration also, Chairman, which is why I made sure that they were pulling to, when they spoke to us, I made sure that the earliest opportunity, they then spoke to other organisations.
So you're saying that the consultation took place directly from the people planning the highway?
We're still in the engagement phase, so it's not like we're outside of any, a phase of completion is being presented, but I would have hoped that earlier engagement would have happened. That's a piece of learning that they will have to take away having.
So the county council, the people in the county council dealing with the non-motor rights of way and public access themselves were not approached until the other user groups had, were approached? Is that what you're saying?
Pretty much, there wasn't a lot in it. So I'd seen various, very draft iterations, right at the outset, and made some suggestions. However, that was still very much in the draft phase, and that was about 2018. The next, I hear, is 2022, 23, and I'm seeing slightly more developed plans with different thinking. And again, I've responded on those, and at that point, I was saying, well, hold on, this is where we need to be looking at the various bodies who would be interested in this. They'd already done public engagement, but they hadn't directly, as far as I could tell, engaged with user group organisations, which I thought was a missing part.
Perhaps there's the right person to raise this with is councillor Carrington, because we live in an age when local authorities, particularly highway authorities, are supposed to be looking at travel in a very broad context, and there are things like, as you've mentioned, reducing traffic, but making things more accessible, active travel zones in which people are encouraged to walk and cycle and so on. And it does require everybody to be joined up, and that means joined up at the earliest possible phase. And if what we're seeing to be having here is there's a group of probably rather engineering-minded people planning a highway, and it's a kind of, oh, yes, and we have to ask them about, you know, all these other things that comes later, rather than it being in there at the beginning, so everybody's going in the same direction. Councillor Carrington.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I don't think either I or Chris would disagree with you there. The one thing I just would point out through you is that in addition to this, what is effectively, we hope still, an early stage informal consultation, there will of course be a formal planning application, which is going to be prepared and submitted, I think I'm right in saying, later this calendar year, or yes, later this calendar year. That will give everybody, members of the public, organisations, absolutely everybody, a right to formal comment. But it is clearly better if we can establish the ground rules informally earlier on, and I'll certainly use all my best efforts to make sure of that.
I mean, I'm sure you'll understand, but the kind of thing that happens is, once you've got to the point where you've got the civil engineers are testing the ground and thinking about where they're going to put their concrete bridge buttments and things like that, you know, it's very difficult to get them to change their minds, and for very understandable reasons. Right, I think that that's covered that. Nobody else trying to have a say? Right, Chris, it's all your business today, so it's probably rights of way section changes. I assume we're talking here about Lincolnshire County Council only. Is Matthew there? Does he want to?
Indeed, I mean, this is predominantly an agenda item I'd forwarded. And yes, I do appear to have done all the talking. It looks like the next three items aren't me though, so everyone can have a rest. Emily, I wonder if you could be so kind as to put up the structured diagram I sent through earlier? Okay, so members may be aware, maybe not be aware, that a little time ago, nearly 18 months ago now, I started acting as deputy head of environment to the previous incumbent. I then moved into being the interim head of environment and has been fortunate enough to be appointed the full-time head of environment. So you can see that's the broad remit that I cover now. So rights of way and access still remains under my own leadership, albeit that I won't be the direct hands-on manager anymore. And I cover across flood risk and water management, sustainability, so that's carbon management, net zero, natural environment and active travel. And also, I continue to line manage the Lincolnshire Walls Countryside Service out of Louth. But just looking at the bit the local access forum has most ties to, you'll see there the public rights of way and access manager, and I'll come back to that in a moment. But you can see our setup there, we have three senior countryside officers, each accompanied by an assistant, so we break the county up into third. So it's West Lindsay, the city, and North Castriven, which Chris Marsh looks after. East Lindsay and Boston Borough areas, which Jonathan Stockdale looks after, and then South Castriven and South Holland, which is covered by Andy Savage, and you can see their relative assistants, and Nigel Walton at the bottom, who does a lot of the administrative work in terms of particularly in purchasing, procuring timber and so on. Alongside them, you have the Countryside Access and Community Project Officer, Debbie Braun. Her predominant focus recently has been the Viking Way, and it may be something that, not wishing to suggest what your forward programme might not look like, Chairman, but it may be that the forum might wish for a presentation from Debbie on the work that she's done on the Viking Way over the last couple of years, some of the improvements we've made, some of the realignment we've done in terms of the routing, particularly where it passes through the city, and some of the improvements we've made to some of the road crossing points in terms of the line to make it a safer route for people. So that's something that, you know, could be considered going forward. And then on the left-hand side, you'll see the definitive map team, now under the leadership of Andrew Pickwell, who has recently secured the position of senior definitive map officer following the retirement of the previous incumbent. Sharon James, who covers our public path order work, and then we have three officers, the three officers I mentioned earlier, who cover the definitive map modification order work, and you'll see that we have a current vacancy following another retirement. And Julie Hume is a new officer to the section, she actually replaced Andrew, who has obviously moved up one in the scale. So we've got quite a newish section in that regard, and, you know, that they'll be looking at, you know, how they operate a little bit, it's a time for a little bit of a review of, you know, can we do things better? Can we be more effective and more efficient to perhaps get beyond the four average that you can accomplish per officer potentially nationally, and see if we can't stretch that. And as you can see, right at the very top, the person who's going to be leading on all that, and looking at, you know, the rights of way strategy going forward in terms of the rights of way, you know, the refresh of the rights of way improvement plan, and will also be now your contact for the local access forum is Andrew Fletcher. And I'm just wondering, Andrew, if you would be prepared to come on screen and just introduce yourself?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Andrew Fletcher. I'm excited to come into Lincolnshire. I'm currently working for Wokingham Borough Council, and I'll be starting at Lincolnshire on the 10th of July.
Perhaps you could just give a bit of background about what you're doing rights of way, Andrew?
Yes, so I've worked in rights of way since about 2002. I've come from a legal background, so I currently am the green infrastructure manager for Wokingham Borough Council, looking after rights of way and ecology and green infrastructure. But my, you know, as I say, my background is the legal element, but I've handled all parts of rights of way from maintenance and enforcement and legal aspects, claims. So I'm looking forward to, this will be my third rights of way improvement plan, I'm looking forward to starting that, certainly at a county level, and getting involved in it all. I moved up to Lincolnshire about four or five months ago, and absolutely loving it so far, so looking forward to being engaged.
Andrew, did you say Wokingham?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I just spelled it out a bit more clearly.
Yes, sorry, I was probably speaking very fast. It's Wokingham Borough Council, so it's just to the west of Windsor and London.
Thank you. I've just lost my place now, thinking about, well, you've finished, Chris, really, you've explained it, have you?
I have, thank you, Chairman, yes. I'm quite happy to take any questions on afterwards.
Any questions? Nobody got any questions? Then we're going on to the horse and rider safety from Angela Coulton.
I hope you're all able to see the rather unpleasant videos and pictures that I was able to send, and that Emily kindly sent you all for me. You may well have seen them on BBC Look North last week as well. This incident happened a couple of weeks ago in South Reston Parish, which is near Loweth. The horse, who is very, very good in traffic, was just walking down the road and was deliberately driven at by a car and ended up on its back in the ditch, almost dead. It almost died twice during the rescue attempt. Now, I know this isn't specifically a rights of way or an access issue, but I wanted to demonstrate to you all what we as horse riders have to deal with every time we take our horses or our carriages out on the road. This isn't a one-off incident, this is, and every single time we go out, we have at least something that puts us in danger of life and limb. It's getting worse all the time. It's definitely got worse since Covid, as the traffic's built back up on the roads again, people have become less and less tolerant of horses on the roads. Most of us ride at quiet times, we try and stick to back lanes. However, that means that, you know, anybody who comes across us around a blind corner aren't usually expecting to meet us, and it leaves us open to lots and lots of incidents. Most of the incidences just end up with us hanging on to our horse's neck while it spins around and tries not to dump us in a ditch, like what happened on the video. But there's a little bit of a problem with the reporting of equestrian incidents. We are trying to encourage equestrians to report every incident they have, either to Operation Snap via a camera, and sadly, most of us ride and drive with multiple cameras on our persons and on our carriages nowadays, and also to the British Horse Society's reporting forum, which allows them to pass on information to both the police and to local authorities. And we also have the problem that horses get killed on the roads, and it's not counted because they're identified under law as, like a car, a thing, not a live creature. And this is just to demonstrate from us in the equestrian community why we are lobbying so very, very hard to both reopen rights of way that are either blocked or unaccessible because we can't ride or drive down them because they're, they've got locked. I had somebody contact me only two days ago, where they went down a bridleway and in fact got to the other end of it and found that the gate was padlocked, so they had to turn around and go back and all the way home again. And this is happening more and more. We don't drive down bridleways and restricted byways to be difficult to landowners or to cause anybody any problems. We do it if we're lucky enough to have them. Unfortunately, I'm not in the area where I keep my horses, it's all roadwork, but in some of the areas, which are even worse, I think, than mine, we're trying desperately to get some of these rights of way reopened and reusable. to get some of these rights of way reopened and reusable. And any ideas, anybody can come up, even if we could perhaps get working groups in areas, which have happened in some parts of the country, where a few volunteers get together and do a bit of strimming and a bit of mowing and a bit of branch cutting. There's many ways that people can help out without it being a burden on the actual council itself. Another thing to consider is quiet lanes. They can be really useful. And routes that are unsuitable for HGVs, marked as unsuitable for HGVs, with the amount of national infrastructure projects that are planned for Lincolnshire, over the whole of Lincolnshire. To give you an example, the very small village I keep my horses in, if either of the national infrastructure projects which are planned for that village go through and one or other of them will end up going through, we're looking at 120 lorries per day for about two years, going through a single track road through the village. And we'll literally all be prisoners in our own fields for that time. So it's really just to raise awareness of why we do what we do, why we're lobbying so hard. And as I say, if anybody can think of any other ways we can get a little bit more off-road access, we would all, I'm sure, be really, really grateful.
Thank you, thank you very much. councillor Carrington wishes to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Angela, I was horrified by this video, it was really terrible. Would it help if we put some sort of warning signs on the roads, like we have warning signs for deer, that kind of thing? Could we have something like that for horses?
That's a very, very interesting question. Actually, in South Reston Parish, they were offered some signs which were free from the British Horse Society, which were going to be offered to the village and they were going to be put up with the council's permission on some signposts going into the village. This was about just over a year ago. But unfortunately, the head of highways decided that we've got too many signs anyway and he doesn't want any more. And anyway, horses don't matter.
Can I just answer, Chair?
Yeah, please do.
I think that's a terrible attitude altogether. I mean, I'm talking about putting signs on regular routes, not on some motorways. But obviously, regular routes where the horses are going to be, at least some kind of warning sign to just be aware that there might be, you know...
Chris wants to speak.
Yeah, these are small signs. They're a little bit smaller than the triangular warning horse signs that you have on the edges of the villages. And they just have a graphic of a horse, a 10 mile per hour and a two metre and an arrow, you know, 10 miles an hour, two metres. And it gives people an idea that horses might be in the area. No, it was a complete refusal.
Thank you, Angela, Chris.
And we do have the lady who had that incident with the horse in the ditch does have documentary evidence of the refusal.
Okay, so I'm not aware of that correspondence. Obviously, it's been dealt with by my colleagues in roads management.
It's a different department.
Yeah, well, we're all part of it. We go under a mantra of one council, so that shouldn't necessarily be an issue. But it isn't something I'm aware of and I don't know their rationale for the refusal. I don't know if they had a particularly good reason in terms of the sightlines and how big the signs were. Small signs can be often confusing to motorists because they can't read them as they drive past and so on. So there may be a reason for that, but I don't know. I was going to mention, obviously, there is the...
He didn't want clutter.
There is the standard warning triangle, which is employed across the county already. But it is within the gift of the Local Access Forum to provide advice to section 94 bodies, which includes the highways department of Lincolnshire County Council. So if the forum so wishes to write a advice note or provide advice to the address we send it to, which usually goes via the chief exec, then that advice would have to be responded to by my colleagues in roads management highways. I don't like using highways as a collective term because obviously it includes the rights of way network, but specifically the roads management team.
Well, the councillor in question actually that refused the signs was actually interviewed on Look North refusing them.
I mean, on the subject of signs, personally, I would expect the authority to use evidence-based procedure because there are valid reasons for saying that signs can be confusing, can be too many of them. But what really matters is do they work? And I'm sure that...
Yes, they've been proved in a lot of other local societies around...
I was going to say, I am sure there are people around the country who have been monitoring the effects and seeing if it works or not. If they are proved to work and they are not being used where they would work, then that is obviously a matter of great concern, particularly if it's actually been specifically overtly put to the authority that one is needed at a particular location. Just broaden it out a little. There are people who would say, well, you know, horse riders are, there are a lot of them in Lincolnshire, but there's still a very small section of the community, partly because owning a horse is a very expensive thing. But we should not forget that...
I don't think, I don't think the fact that...
Angela, please, let me hear me out, that all of the things that you've been asking for, nearly all of them, are things that benefit all users. That if we have the green lanes in good condition and opened up, that's better for cycling and it's better for walkers even, and particularly from an environmental point of view. There are very good reasons for conservation of nature, for keeping the green lanes broad and open. And I particularly am often going on about the use of the verges. The glory of Lincolnshire is that we have these so many roads with very wide grass verges. And if these cannot be used to provide for equestrians, you'd think, well, there's something going crazy here.
Well, unfortunately, you would have seen in the video, the grass, the reason the horse wasn't on the grass verge to begin with, it was a reasonably narrow grass verge, it hadn't been mowed. And what the driver wouldn't have known is that about three or four foot in from the edge of the carriageway, and there's a clue in that, carriageway, the ditch is about nine foot deep. But obviously, when the car drove at the horse and it jumped, a horse can jump five or six foot sideways, no problem. It just ended upon its back in the ditch.
It all comes down to taking a broad and, I don't particularly like the word, but holistic view of these questions and looking at the whole, when we're talking about equestrians, walkers and cyclists, as you said, the entire road network is open to them, except for motorways. And we need to look at them all, which is particularly true, you mentioned, I think, quiet ways, if that's the right term.
Quiet lanes.
Quiet lanes, yes. There are many, there are many public carriageways which have a tarmac road down the centre, which are, get relatively little traffic and are actually ideal for walking along, actually. So I'm talking too much really and hogging it a bit. But Chris wants to speak, so over to Chris.
Talking of hogging it, the chairman may be pleased to note that under my new Head of Environment remit, one of the things we're looking at is the usage of road verges, not just from a, you know, how do we manage them all? You know, as a larger part of our owned estate, if you like, to look for access, biodiversity, you know, if we can create linkages between bridleways and cut them slightly wider to make them more accessible, make sure the signage isn't in the way, that sort of thing. That's a programme that I'm just about to initiate, having discussed it with the executive...
Remind you of the, I don't know where it's got to now, but there is an ongoing project in Lincolnshire to maintain verges by cutting them for fuel for bio, if that's the right word, for biodigesters for energy production. And it seems to me that there's an enormous opportunity if it is expanded and it's proved to work. I think it's been proved to work if it's expanded for maintaining verges. Because a verge which is maintained to be easy to use by equestrians, et cetera, will also be one which is easier to mow because it will be level and it will have, you know, all the bumps and gullies.
Indeed, and verge bio harvesting is part of the project. Just to clarify though, the scheme has been on hold because the Environment Agency would not give us a permit for the risings coming out of the anaerobic digestion system.
I thought that had been sold ages ago, but not. Okay, well, thank you very much, there's a lot of...
Sorry, sorry, Chairman, we do have councillor Cleaver wishing to speak.
I beg your pardon, councillor Cleaver.
Thank you, in relation to road safety generally, finally, Lincolnshire County Council is carrying out a review of speed limit policy. I asked for this all over a year ago to be done in relation to 20 mile an hour limits being allowed to be more prevalent if communities requested them. So I should be most happy for anyone concerned about that particular issue to feed into that, into that piece of work.
Thank you very much for that. Does anybody have any more to say on that item? I'd like to thank Angela very much for bringing this up. And I'm sure that everybody would want to share in expressing our horror at that particular event. And I don't think I had realised before that there was an element of deliberation on the part of the car driver, which is really, really frightening.
Just very quickly, Chairman, this obviously isn't a new issue and is something we investigated after the first rights of way improvement plan. And we did some work with the Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership. Obviously, that's quite some time ago now. We're due to be writing, you know, under Andy's auspices, another rights of way improvement plan. So it's a good opportunity to start driving that narrative again and start looking to speak with colleagues on that road safety element of it.
Fine, I'm going to move on now then, unless anyone else has anything, to item 12, which is Countryside For All. Is this going to be a question of simply receiving a report?
No, I think Angie's taking this one again.
Oh, right, I beg your pardon, Angie.
That's okay. Now, I'm assuming you don't want me to read the full, four-page report out from John because you've all been sent it and been able to have a look at it. Basically, we've been talking about getting funding for the accessibility, you know, the Countryside For All leaflets and getting them printed. And there's also plans in place, hopefully, to look for new accessible rights of way and routes for Countryside For All as well. However, John asked me to ask specifically have this question tabled. Can LCC provide a generic email address to go on a poster where somebody at the council offices or in, yeah, the access department would be able to log it and, you know, feed it back to us? Also, is there any member of the Local Access Forum who isn't already on the disability subcommittee willing to volunteer to collate information on community libraries? So that's something to have a think about. Is there any member of the Local Access Forum who is not on the disability subgroup willing to volunteer to create a poster requesting members of the public to let us know where the most accessible routes are in South Holland? Because nobody on the subgroup actually lives in the South Holland area. And none of us really know the area well enough to try and identify any routes that might be accessible that we could feed in, because South Holland have said that they would like to have something in their area, which is fair enough because, you know, Lincolnshire is a big county. And if you haven't got anything local, it means quite a journey to get to somewhere that you can get out and about if you have limited mobility. So if we could have those questions sort of noted, that would be good. Also, are there any members of the Local Access Forum, again, not already on the disability subgroup, willing to volunteer to be an ambassador for the Boston Woods Trust sites? There are two sites which need walking, preferably in every season. We like to walk the routes in winter, spring, summer and autumn, just to make sure that they're still accessible, just to make sure that no remedial work needs doing and to see that they are accessible all season through. And also, any member who's not already on the subgroup, who regularly walks Frampton Marsh or for Eastern Shore, the two RSPB sites that have accessible routes. And a third one, anybody who regularly goes to Deeping Lakes, we'd like an ambassador for there as well, please. There's quite a few of us on the subgroup, but obviously, Lincolnshire being such a huge county and the sites being so far apart from each other, we've had to divide them up. I, for example, live in Threckingham, which is in North Caesteven. One of my routes is in Bourne Woods, which is in South Holland. No, sorry, South Caesteven. And the other route is in Skegness at Gibraltar Point. So I have a fair old trek each time I need to check one of my routes. And I think most other people, we've tried to put people as close as we can to where their routes are, but it's just not always possible. So it's not an onerous task. So if anybody could help or knows anybody that isn't even on the LAF who might wish to become an ambassador, you know, I think we'll take any help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that any more to say, any questions?
Sorry, Chairman, there was a question directly for the authority.
Then councillor Carrington.
In terms of providing a generic email address, then I'm sure we can provide something we can do with that. I also strikes me that, I'm not quite sure of the question, to collate information on community libraries, obviously, libraries are part and parcel of what local authority deals with. And I sit in an area that deals with culture and the library, so I could ask some questions if needs be. I'll speak with John to see what sort of questions he wants answering and I'll see if I can find the information that way. And with regards the looking after particular sites or being ambassador for sites, I'm wondering if there wasn't a Local Access Forum member available, whether it would be worth approaching the local parish councils to see if anyone's on the parish council who would take on that role on behalf of the Local Access Forum as well.
Councillor Carrington used to speak.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It was really just a quick question to our speaker. I'm glad they got the grant to print the leaflets and that's incredibly important. Going back to the first item on the agenda when we were discussing the coastal path and Chris mentioned signage. I think the more that people understand the country they're walking through and the more they're encouraged to, the more they will value it. But could I ask our speaker whether the leaflets they're producing will also be available on the internet or through social media? And if so, where? I'm thinking or asking myself, A, whether that can be done through, obviously, this council, also through district councils. But where a route passes through parish councils, most of whom also have their own website, whether that is another means of just getting that information out there?
Is Angela there still?
Yeah, sorry, I muted myself. Yeah, I do believe that all the leaflets should be available online on the Lincolnshire County Council website under Countryside For All or Accessible Routes. I don't know the exact thing that you press in, but they are definitely available on the county council website.
Perhaps Chris can...
They're actually on the...
So they should.
They're actually on the visit link.
John would know better than me.
They're actually on the Visit Lincolnshire website.
Are they?
We signpost to them, we can't host mapping on our website, so...
Right, thank you for that.
Thank you for that. I just through you, Chairman, do flag that some district councils on their websites do have sections which encourage walking and walking routes and that might be something which can be pursued. The more outlets, the better.
I think in the past, Chris, there's been some effort to try and coordinate leaflets and standardise them and things, hasn't there? I don't know what the situation is now.
That's very much the approach. So Debbie Braun, who I mentioned earlier, who's been doing the Viking Way, that's part and parcel of what her job is. So we've been working with our tourism colleagues, Mary Powell, and various other stakeholders who look at tourism and route promotion, trying to collate it into one location so that now that the Visit Lincolnshire site becomes a repository for all walking and equestrian promotion routes.
Yes, thank you. Unless anyone else has anything more to raise on that, I'm going to move on to 13. And I do want to say something about this because I feel that both the county council, or both the councils involved and the members of this body, we really need to have a complete rethink of what we can do. Because the Local Access Forum has not worked out in the way that the legislation originally seemed to anticipate. And it has, I think, Chris, I will imagine will agree with me, it has proved very difficult to recruit people, are usually short of people. And there is obviously a very little public awareness and public interest in what we do to say that we have an item for, you know, public participation. And at one time, people did come. And my impression, having been on from the very beginning, is that there was a lot of interest to begin with and even competition to be on the, to sit on the body. And it's waned and evaporated over the years because people feel that we don't actually have any influence, we are actually very remote from the decision-making, very indirect from it. And we're not an executive body. And people bring things to us and I often feel we're, it's almost dishonest of us saying, oh, what about this? What about that? Could we do this? Could we do that? And all we do is, you go to good councillors here, and I'm very pleased that you are here, is perhaps your voice and Chris's, it gets passed on to them. And I often think that very likely the same contacts could have been made more directly through some other routes. Direct contact with user groups, for example. And I, I don't have any answers. I'm not saying that the LAF should close up shop. But I do think it needs everybody to sit back and look right from the beginning. What are we here for? What can we do that's useful? Rather than, you know, sitting here talking about things that in the end, we can't affect. Councillor Carrington, I hope I've been suitably provocative.
No, of course. I mean, that's what I expect from a chair. That's no point. I'm interested, do you have a high profile? Because do you actually advertise that we exist? Because you said there was interest at the beginning and then it sort of waned. But do, are you presently advertising that we're around? I mean, is there any kind of thing on the, on the internet that if you feel strongly about the equestrian business, you can contact us and, and talk about it? Is there anything like that?
Can I, before I, before, Chris might want to answer that. But my feeling is that people have been recruited who are quite keen. But they have felt that they're not using their time productively. So it's not that they didn't know about it and they, but it was they felt that in practice, this was a talking shop, I suppose, that didn't actually achieve anything. Because we are so remote from the executive decision-making. I'm not saying we should be part of it, but we are just at that distance. Yes, go on.
Yeah, yeah, thank you Chairman. And to a degree, I do share some of the concerns that you've raised there. I think you're quite right. Back in 2000, when local access forums were brought into being following the Countryside and Rightsway Act, there was a real drive in, in the world of access generally around rightsway improvement plans. But also, it was the onset of the open access land progression, mountain, moor and downland heath. Obviously, that's moved on to include the coast now, which is where we have perhaps more influence. Government will be reviewing open access land and if we get a different hue colour of government, that might be a more likely scenario. We don't know. Just, you know, taking sound names from some...
Can I interrupt you there? Because I think this is a good illustration. Now, that was a specific thing. I think it was in the act, was it, the legislation, that we were to look at the open access? Because open access was a new thing.
Absolutely.
And together, and also rightsway improvement plans. And it wasn't difficult to recruit people from the LAF to take part in this. We were given all the land that had initially been identified as potentially eligible for open access and we were expected to comment on it and so on. And what we found was that the criteria for whether it was on the open access or not was entirely objective and there was nothing that we could do. So, and a lot of people put a lot of work into it in terms of writing their views and collating the information and sending it back. And we found that it was all, it was actually irrelevant. And at the end of the day, in Lincolnshire, I think there was, I think there's only, apart from the land that was already de facto open access, which is the Forestry Commission and the Commons, the things like the Lincoln Commons. I think there was only one piece of significant land that became open access in the whole of Lincolnshire. And it was only a few acres.
Yeah, I think there was a total of about two or three. There was Red Hill up in the Wolds, Alma Park.
Not Red Hill, the, the one down south.
Alma Park and Grantham.
Yeah. And the, so you can imagine that people felt after that, where next time there was anything where they were asked to do anything, put some real effort into it, there was a feeling of, you know, just exhaustion really. And, but the other one I think of as well, since we talked about the hike and relief road, is the eastern bypass where, again, we put in a lot of work, putting in reports, detailed suggestions and so on. And it had not any influence whatsoever. And I think, as I said before, one of the reasons for that was the, the plans had already been prepared. We weren't asked, asked to have an import until the planning application stage, when a complete set of drawings that showed every single curbstone was in there. And the things that we really ought to have been saying there was how you're going to encourage people in villages like like Hayton and Cherry Willingham and places, how are they going to be able to cross this big road by, you know, on foot, cycle and horses? And the answer was not, you're going to send them round the sides of a bypass, the sides of a great big roundabout, having to cross several lanes of traffic, which was the only option left by the time it came. The idea of, you know, putting in a, a not at grade crossing in a suitable place, that those kinds of more imaginative thinking didn't get a look in because it was too late. But I, but the, well, I'm, I'm too much dealing with the detail there. But the point is that when people did put in an effort, they, they visibly saw and felt that it had made no difference.
And that might not necessarily be reflective across all local access forums. I think we were hamstrung, particularly in the open access debate, by the strict definition of what land would be included, mountain, moor and downland and heath, none of which is prevalent in our county.
The legislation, the legislation did not provide for any, well, Lincolnshire doesn't have land suitable for open access. That's the bottom line. But we were kind of misled into going through this huge process. Now, I'm not saying that the outcome of the process was necessarily wrong, but it was diverted, it wrongly diverted people's attentions and effort into a dead end.
What we found was from the draft maps that were published, that the forum would have seen at the time, there was a lot more on the table in terms of open access land, but it was all removed under the auspices of being semi-improved grassland. Now, one of the things that looking at potentially in terms of the review is actually looking back at that and saying, well, actually, that could actually form part of it. So large swathes of the northwestern walls would potentially start becoming under, under open access if you do change that.
Yes. Well, don't get into the details of the local access. Whatever the reason, people were, and that was the part of, the fault of the legislation that said, you will have a role in this. And they found that they didn't have a role in it. Now, yes, I'm talking too much, so I'll hand over to you, Councillor Carrington.
Chairman, I don't want to get too much into specifics which happened before some of us were involved in all this. But I think you have raised some very challenging points and I think it behoves us to reflect deeply on them. A couple of points occurred to me. The first is, this is not the only, as Chris just alluded to, it's not the only local access forum that there is. And it would be very interesting, I think, if officers could do a quick trawl of some representative ones around the place. Let's see how they're working. Are they working well? Are they working badly? Are there any lessons to be learned from the way that they do things? But the other thing that just occurred to me as you were talking is, is, and setting aside the founding legislation that I'm not particularly familiar with, but thinking of how this group might be useful going forward, is to think, how do we work? And it seems to me that there is a parallel with, for example, the scrutiny process in local government at county and district. Scrutiny is often misunderstood because people think, ah, something is done and we scrutinise what has happened and decides whether it's well or whether it's not. I'm fortunate enough to be scrutinised in my district council, where I'm on the executive deputy leader and I chair a scrutiny committee here. So I see it from both sides and that's really valuable. And the way certainly that the committee that I chair works is very proactive. We're looking forward. Yes, we're looking at what is, what is happening now and what has happened. But we're also looking forward, often quite a long way forward, to see if we can tilt things, if we can just improve outcomes that haven't happened yet, but will happen down the track. And I just wonder whether there is a, perhaps an informal session that might happen where some of us come together and consider how this body has worked in the past, consider what its opportunities are going forward and how, if we need to make it more attractive to people, how could we do that? Because I completely agree with you. We're looking around the chamber here. There are rather too many empty seats.
And there was a marked lack of, lack of enthusiasm for being the chair, which even I had.
Don't look at me, brother. Don't look at me.
Can I, no, Chris, I want to come out there. But I, I mean, I think you've come up with an extremely good idea and thank you very much for it. I'd just add a little bit that in the early years of the LAFs, the Natural England, I think it was, there's been so many changes of body. I can remember which one was which at the right time. Had quite a lot of, quite a large budget for supporting local access forums. And we used to have both a national convention of local access forums and much more actively, a regional one. And it was very interesting how differently they operated, as you say. It was partly because of the very different nature of the landscape. I mean, there were cities of Leicester and Nottingham have their own. Well, obviously, that's a very different situation to Lincolnshire, but also those counties, which are different again. And Derbyshire was in there as well. Well, of course, there it's, everything's dealt with by the National Park. Not everything, but a lot of it comes under the National Park, Peak District National Park, which is a whole different ballgame. But some authorities gave the local access forums a very active role in such things as considering individual diversion applications. Now, that's easier for a small authority where there are far fewer of them. But they effectively acted as a committee to consider and advise. And, but you, you get a virtuous circle there where if you've got people who are given that sort of opportunity to take part, you attract very capable people to the role, people who knew their business and understood the local area, understood what people wanted, understood the problems. I'm not suggesting we could do that in Lincolnshire, but it, it's an example of how, how things could work very differently. But I think that, and I don't want to make it sound as if I, I think that we should have a lot of that sort of power, executive power and so on, but we should cut our coat to our cloth, I suppose. We could work out what we can do and then say of that what we should do and then say, how can we do it, really? And, but this doesn't, it's not for the LAF to say this, it's for you and the, the county council to come together with us and, and just have some, I suppose, some fresh thinking, some blue skies thinking about it. That's my suggestion, which seems to be converging with yours, Councillor Carrington.
Chairman, if I may, I have my notes in front of me. So technically, the function of the LAF, and I'm taking this verbatim from the, from the regulations, I think, advises to the improvement of public access to land in the area for the purposes of open air recreation and enjoyment of the area for any lawful purpose. And for vehicles, this is just limited to byways, home tour traffic. And that was the, the establishment of the LAF and what they could do. So it's providing advice to what we call the section 94 bodies. We very rarely have had any formal advice from the, from the forum. And I've mentioned this a number of times, that we talk, you know, things get talked about, but then there's no advice. So I'm providing a lot of reports, spending a lot of time preparing reports. And at the end of it, it's, it was noted. And that's no, that's not a great use of an officer's time. Okay? So if advice does come through, and I think this is where the forum perhaps needs to go.
But again, it's, well, as, as you know, first of all, those bodies include all of the district councils.
Indeed.
And we have never been able to get any engagement with them. They simply don't, don't want to know we exist. So there's, so we could, if we sent advice to them, heaven knows where it goes. I think we have on occasions. But heaven knows where it goes. Nobody, nobody, I think it arrives and somebody's asked, doesn't know what to do with it. Because we've tried to engage with them and say, can you have an avenue to receive our advice? And it doesn't go anywhere.
I recall that that kind of conversation about the planning side of things.
Yes.
And the advice should be being sent to the chief exec and then obviously filters through the system. But you should get a response. Otherwise, yeah, it's just like a member of the public not getting a response, which just seems the wrong way for an authority to act.
But also, of course, if we're going to do that kind of thing, we do need some sort of, you know, clerical support.
Which is, we've always provided it, whether it was Steve Blackgrave, what, now Emily, that's the support that we provide. That's our contribution as a local authority in my time.
But, and it's, I say, it's establishing a virtuous circle though, where we get the ball rolling, where people feel it's worth putting in this effort. Because we know it's going to go somewhere and get some notice. And that, and, and it's only when we start being noticed that people feel it's putting worth in the effort. It's only when we put in the effort that we will get noticed.
If I may through you Chairman, make a suggestion. Obviously, with my departure, there is an opportunity to look at this in a different way.
Yeah.
You know, and he's not up on the screen now, but I would suggest any, you know, Councillor Carrington mentioned potentially an informal discussion, not something that's particularly, you know, sat with Emily having to take copious amounts of minutes and notes, but a discussion with Andrew when he starts in July. Because he will, you know, he's dealt with probably two local access forums, two different authorities he's worked for. And, and we can reflect on the, the regional perspective from East Midlands, which I know fairly well. I would think you would find if you ask any of the Shire authorities, their local access forums are in the same position as yourselves. I don't know what that's like in the South East, which is Andrew's area.
Well, I was going to say, it will be very interesting to know what his experiences with local access forums.
Are you there, Andrew?
I am indeed. I've been following the discussion. It's very similar sort of thing. It is hard to get people to engage with local access forums. The, the particular remit that they're a statutory advisory body has been very useful. With, with the local access forums I've been involved with, there has been formal advice given. And at the end of each letter, there is a statement which explains that the body that's being given the advice is actually under a duty to take that advice on board. It's not necessarily has to follow that advice, but it has to show that it's taken it on board. And we found that that paragraph at the end of the letter was quite a powerful tool to, for the LAF's advice to be taken seriously and raises it above the level of just anything else that's coming through. It's, one of the other things that's been very helpful is also having a chairman's network of local access forums of the sort of neighbouring authorities, try and get boundary issues resolved and things like that. And I think there, I'm probably running before I can walk here, as I haven't even started the role yet, but the regeneration of the rightsway improvement plan could also be a good trigger point for a regeneration of the local access forum and could include these activities such as coming up with a vision statement of exactly what sort of things the local access forum is going to look at. And working with districts to try and make sure that they're aware of the local access forum and what the advice means when it comes to it. In a way, the joint local access forum that you've got, looking at the big picture element, has probably got some real value to the districts that may not see outside their own borders. So there's, there's some opportunities there to answer the question of what's in it for me for the districts. And those are my sort of initial thoughts.
Yes, please, Councillor Carrington.
Thank you for that. That was a really, really interesting contribution from, from working. And I think when, when you arrive, I saw there you disappeared from the screen. When you arrive, it would be, yeah, it would be really valuable to have that discussion, obviously with, with, with Chris involved as well and perhaps James, just to think out of the box about going forward. I think Chairman, the one point that I would make is I'm very, very much interested in outcomes. But I think we'd all agree on the call and in the room that there is a difference between activity and work.
Absolutely.
And that's very important to bear in mind. I'm not really very keen on generating activity and I'm concerned about the point Chris has made about a great deal of resource going into preparing resort reports which are just noted. And that, when we refer back to scrutiny and overview, you know, you can have far too little scrutiny and far too much overview, expensively produced documents. Yes, thank you very much. And nobody's actually doing any scrutiny. I think we need to have a think about what we do within the framework of the legislation and think how we can contribute. And certainly when it comes to working with our colleagues in the districts, I'm privileged to be deputy chairman, deputy leader of one. And I'm sure that we can, we can encourage a positive view because just thinking about our conversation this morning, certainly my district council, North Cisteven, we've got policies on footways, we've got policies on active travel, we've got policies on, on zero carbon, which are run through everything we do and are really very sophisticated, timed and costed. All of that actually relates to many of the aspects which this group would deal with. So I think there probably are synergies, not in terms of making work and just having a meeting for the sake of having a meeting, but for improving outcomes for our residents. And that has to be the test of whatever we do.
What seems to be coming out of this is something naturally falling out. It's always good when that happens. Falling out, I mean, falling together, the opposite. We have Andrew coming into office in a few weeks' time and our next meeting is scheduled for September. And if Andrew and perhaps you, Councillor Carrington, and perhaps me, perhaps, or whoever... And if Andrew and perhaps you councillor Carrington and perhaps me, perhaps whoever we think we could come together, councillor Cairns, we could come together informally to thrash out some ideas on this. Does that seem like a good idea? Yeah. Thank you very much indeed and thank you, Andrew. You're welcome, Chris. It's Angie, I was about to say, does anybody else want to come in on this? Angie, do you want to come in on this?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I hadn't realised that councillor Carrington was Northcote Stephen. I'm also in Northcote Stephen and I have tried really, really hard to engage with Northcote Stephen and hit a bit of a brick wall, so I don't know whether he can suggest I do anything.
Angie, could you, is that all you wanted to say? Yes, he's engaging now, yes. Go on, if you, have you finished? Angie, have you finished?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you, councillor Cairns.
Yeah, chair, I'm just thinking, it would be a good idea if we all introduced each other instead of just sort of sitting here and people, I don't know half these people, so it'd be nice if we all sort of introduced each other.
That's a very good idea.
It's a, it's a, it's a thing to do, isn't it really?
That's, I think that comes about because of the online business really, because you can't see people, you forget they're there. And I will hold up my hand and say, that's my fault, I beg your pardon. All right. So, Forward Work Programme, I've rather sort of hijacked that for a slightly different agenda, but does anybody want to bring in something more conventional for Forward Work Programme? Chris?
As I suggested, you know, there's a couple of bits there perhaps to reflect the North Hiking Relief Road and I mentioned the Viking Way project as to whether or not.
Sorry, I couldn't.
Sorry, Viking Way project and North Hike and Relief Road as potential future items for consideration for the forum to provide advice.
Yes. Peter Hinton, do you want to come in? Peter? Is he struggling for mute? He's talking on mute, I think. Peter, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, the bar keeps disappearing off the bottom of the screen. I've spent many, many years commuting into the magistrate court in Lincoln, I don't enjoy the journey anymore. Would it be possible to hold these meetings at venues outside of Lincoln? When we were the Southlinks and Rutland, we went to some very interesting places, to tell you the truth. It might make it easier for more physical attendance rather than continuing online. You've actually also covered, the list of notes I'd got, well, I was intending to raise, you've actually managed to hit pretty much all of them on the head. I did, I have been developing the feeling, we're a bit of a toothless tiger for some time. A lot of it really comes down to if we had control of a budget, we'd probably have more sway. But I also used to have to deal with an LAF in another county, East Midland County, that was a lot more proactive, only in the sense that they seemed to be paid more attention to. And I, I really look forward to the new appointment coming in because I think a fresh pair of eyes. But the, at the bottom line is, it's a political decision. If we are not to be seen to be worth considering at the higher authorities within particularly the county council, then we will remain a toothless tiger. And I regret to say, Mr Chairman, but you know, that's down to councillors at all levels to shout a bit louder.
Thank you. County councils are both looking rather sombre now. Oh, Angie again.
Sorry, you could be better with me. But for the Forward Work Programme, please, could we consider putting in Beacon Fen, North and South and Lincolnshire Reservoir, which are two national infrastructure projects which are destined for Northcote Stephen, an area slightly to the south and slightly to the east of Sleaford and are going to cause untold misery for several villages. I know it's not necessarily just local access forum, but it is going to mean that rights of way in that area for anywhere from several years to decades are going to be.
Yep. Chris, do you, I'm going to say that we're talking here about future work, so it will be on a future agenda and we can talk about it then, but if you want to say something now?
Yeah, no, sure. I mean, in terms of that, I think it'd be better to not focus on particular ones. It's straying away from the strategic nature of the forum. But there is no harm in looking at national strategic infrastructure projects per se, perhaps using a couple of examples, I don't know, Beacon Fen and Southlink, sorry, Lincolnshire Reservoir as examples, but to coordinate that across the whole remit of national strategic infrastructure programme. There's a lot of solar farm applications coming in across the county, we have a lot of cable route runs and I think it would be better to look at it from a strategic point of view for the forum to provide advice to the authority about how it reacts to these in terms of access.
It seems to me that a reservoir is going to be a very different thing because it actually covers a whole, puts a whole lot of land out of, out of use.
If you see some of the solar farm applications.
At the same time creates different opportunities and to consider the sort of things which are going to be needed to be considered once a site is fixed upon would be very useful. The others are, I don't, I don't suppose solar farms are going to make very much difference, other than.
They are.
Oh, well, they make a big difference to the landscape and I'm.
No, there's going to be 120 lorries a day going through single track roads in very small villages, which is going to make those areas inaccessible for all the locals wanting to use them for their leisure activities. We won't be able to anymore, it's as simple as that. And anyway, I guess we've got to wait until the Beacon Fen people fight with the Anglian Water people and decide who wins.
Yeah, okay. But I think myself, having, having it down for a meeting, the reservoirs, just to get some ideas about how we will approach those even when they happen.
There is just the one single reservoir, the Lincolnshire Reservoir, which is outlined for chairman. Sorry, chairman of scrutiny, Swetan, is it Swetan way on? So just north of Sleaford, I think.
Yeah.
Which is obviously a large expanse of land.
Sweating, yeah.
There, I mean, there are, oh, well, the, I mean, Rutland Water is the obvious precedent for something like this, where there's a lot of experience and a lot of lessons that could have been learned.
I have to say, chairman, this is quite an advanced stage already for the, for the Lincolnshire Reservoir. A lot of that, what's been termed of additionality. So it's not just about a bowl that holds a lot of water for the south of England where it's all needed, but also what can be derived in terms of benefits, including access, including opportunities for the economic.
Isn't this what I've been, you know, we've been talking about this already, you know, we talk about something like this and we're told that, oh, well, it's late in the day.
One for Anglian Water.
Right. I think we've come to the end of the meeting, have we, unless anybody else has anything to bring up?
Can I just ask that we just agree that future meeting dates that are just set out on the agenda, just, just check that everybody's happy with them and that can put them in the diary?
I think the first thing I'd say is, does anybody feel that we need a meeting before the 14th of September? Or if one would be in any way useful, just to, if everyone's happy with that, everyone's happy with that, are they? That's a, yes. Personally, I'm not going to look any further forward than this actual year, calendar year. So I'm happy with the others, I can work around them. Anybody, anybody else got anything, yes, councillor Cairns?
Chair, you did consider holding these meetings in other locations, didn't you?
Oh, yeah, sorry, we didn't deal with that, did we?
Is that something that you're going to revive or are you just going to leave it at as Lincoln?
It's up to us, it's up to the members to say. I know that we did say that we'd meet regularly in Lincoln once the, after the two were joined, simply because if we met anywhere else, it meant somebody was going to have to travel an enormously long way, as it is, a lot of people have to travel an enormously long way, but it would be even further for some people. I feel I can kind of declare an interest because I live about 15 minutes walk away and it's not fair for me to say, you know, it's, I'm quite happy to go, I'd actually quite like to have the excuse for getting out, but obviously people might say I had a vested interest in it being, yeah.
Chairman, just a, just a practical point, and I suppose I'd better declare an interest that I live relatively locally as well, but just on a practical point, clearly there is great value in having these meetings in a hybrid format. Not every venue is capable of providing the technology which allows hybrid meetings to happen in a robust way. I do think that needs to be borne in mind here in this council chamber and throughout the rest of this building, we do have those facilities. They're not always available if you go elsewhere, just a practical point.
Yeah. Go on, Chris.
Happy to explore it with Emily and look at what opportunities there may be further north, further south. I mean, obviously, as a mid-Linkinshire forum, we've met in North East Lincolnshire as well, South Lincolnshire we met in Rutland.
But are we talking about having, looking for a venue which is more accessible in itself? In that it's somewhere more convenient for the roads network, say? Or are we looking for one which will give some, alternate between one that's in the north and will give some people a short journey and other people a longer journey? But at least it'll spread the load if we alternate, which, which are we looking at? Are we just wanting somewhere that's reasonably central but more accessible for people who have to drive? I don't know.
I think a, a central one has meant that those who live to the north and those that live to the south both consider it too far. If you had it at least skewed one way, you'd get more presence from, you know, if you say we were in Stamford, all the ones down the south might turn up, but you'd still have to have a hybrid for everyone from the north. This is the problem with when we had the two forums previously and we're finding that, you know, that was causing the issue.
Well, you're just restating the problem, the question. I'm looking for an answer for those people who are going to have to travel.
Chairman, we do always have the option of holding it completely virtually as well. That's just an option for everybody.
Right. We don't seem to be getting much of a preference, but perhaps, Chris, if you could look at alternatives and see what we can come up with. All right, I haven't been watching, I haven't been watching the time, I'm afraid, but we've been going an hour and three quarters, which I think is a reasonable time. Is everyone happy to finish now? I'll declare the meeting closed and thank you very much, particularly.